Buddy, I'd like to call the Board of Selectmen meeting to order today is August 25th, The Board of Selectmen will take action relative to an agreement with the Police Association regarding detail rate. We'll be talking about an issue with the Animal Control Officer about opening a donation account. We'll look at signing the annual Animal Control Officer warrant submitted by the town clerk. We'll discuss a letter from a resident requesting temporary trailer at home. We'll discuss a letter submitted by the director, treasurer, collector, Diane LaLleche on foreclosure. We'll talk to the town administrator about his report. We'll vote and sign authorization for Charles Maycomer to purchase the roadway materials that we had already previously agreed to. We'll look at a request from Celeste, Mr. Jalakis, to conduct a 5K road race through the town of Freetown. We'll talk about signing a proclamation for the Constitution Week, September 17th through the 23rd. We'll look at the board's minutes from past meetings and we'll look at talking about fall special town meeting date. We'll hear from the Board of Health with several variances and the Personnel Board also has a list of things to go over. With that being said, at this time, is anybody recording the meeting?
Yes.
Let the record reflect that. And next, weekly public discussion. Anybody here for weekly public discussion? Mr. Garnett?
I was curious. I sent a letter offering free service to help maintain the Freetown Memorial Park and also supported by Chuck Macumber saying that he could use the help to help mow the park. It was of over $2,000 value to the town. Sent a letter to the Board of Selectmen two months ago. I just got a letter back saying that they denied the free help. I was curious on how that conclusion came to happen and what were the circumstances that it came to? I offered to mow the park because number one, I feel that the veterans have had a bad turn, so having the landscape company, we could afford to do that for free. The letter that I got sent back by the town said that on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, I would express our heartfelt thanks to you for offering your wonderful support to the town of Freetown. At this time, we must decline your offer to mow and maintain the memorial park. However, it says, "The Freetown Youth Association may be willing to accept your help in mowing their fields." Well, "may be willing," I didn't know I was going to have to beg to offer over $2,000 free value to the town. And number two, there's a reason why I don't want to mow baseball fields. And the reason is, it's free. So that means a park, I can basically get to it when the time fits in. The baseball fields have to be mowed, maintained, that's a big job. I'd like to do it for free, but I only have so much that I can give for free. So I'm curious, and I got this letter from you guys, and why it was declined and what led to it. And Chuck Macumber, I got a supporting letter from him, said that I would greatly appreciate the help. I could read it out loud if you want, but I'm sure you got one. Okay, so it says, "To the Honorable Board of Selectmen, I have been approached by Mr. Larry Garnett of County Road with an offer to assume responsibility for mowing landscaping at the memorial park. Mr. Garnett is the proprietor of landscaping business, professional landscaping, and has previously donated his time and service to maintain the roundabout in East Freetown. I have found his work there and elsewhere to be of high quality. It is my recommendation that the Board of Selectmen accept Mr. Garnett's generous offer of assistance and arrange to have him sign a waiver, liability, or other such documents as would protect the town interests." It only took two months to get a negative response and I'm looking for who voted, what happened?
First, I apologize if I wasn't at that meeting, so I didn't vote either way, so I'll let the two board members.
I was here. You were here. I was here, yeah. We had three veterans that take care of that area come in, discussed it with the board, it's all on videotape. They have company in place that they use that is also free and they didn't want any changes. Chuck Macumber was also here. So the board voted not to make any changes at their request. And the other issue about helping Freetown Athletic Association, that was a recommendation of you to offer your services to them because they do need help and their time, the time that the town uses to cut their lawn seems to get longer and longer each year. So that was the idea of it.
Well, number one, when somebody offers you something for free, you either take it, you don't offer their services to do something else.
We didn't offer you.
Well, it said "maybe."
We asked if.
If the wording says.
I don't know what the letter said, I didn't see the letter.
I'll show it to you if you'd like.
I don't either. You just write it. We asked that you're, they asked you if you may be interested in helping out with the Freetown.
Well, why was Chuck taking care of the veterans' park? There's no other landscapers taking care of that.
Listen, I'm just telling you what the three veterans that came here.
Which three? Who were the three veterans?
Dan LeBlanc, Bruce Wilber, and Larry Asher.
Well, there's no other landscaping company taking care of it.
It's not. Mr. Garnett, we really appreciate the fact that you offered your services.
I would say so. $2,000 worth of free work.
I get that.
With fertilizing and it's a lot more than that.
I get that. And we appreciate the fact that you offered it. I understand. But the fact of the matter remains that when veterans come here and say they don't want to make any changes and they pretty much were inspired into building the park.
But the park is for the people of the town of Freetown, not just for the veterans. It's an open park to the public. It was not maintained properly. It hasn't been maintained properly. We had a licensed fertilizer guy that takes care of it, which we pay, and there's nobody, there's no landscaping company. I suggest that it's possibly those gentlemen misspoke. Now why would three veterans on a park that's for the taxpayers of this community have the right to say, "I can't offer my services, that's how I take it"? There's no company taking care of that. We all know that.
We don't know that.
Well, you got a letter from the Highway Surveyor. He most definitely didn't know about it because he wouldn't offer the free services.
The Highway Surveyor was here that night. He sat right here.
Well, he's probably got enough on his, but he did send a letter.
Yeah, we had to work.
Okay.
Recently did what the people who seem to manage that park suggested. They've been overseeing it, they were inspired, they were from the ground up when it was being built.
I understand that. All of this is a free service.
Why? I get that. And I understand.
That our Highway Surveyor, his surveyor, asked to mow because nobody else mows it. Nobody else mows that but Chuck. And he told me that.
It's one of our parks. Doesn't that kind of make sense?
It's also.
Well, wouldn't it make sense that Chuck could be doing something else when somebody's offering to do it on a regular basis for free? Because before I even sent the letter, the place where you shan't was a mess. Then I showed some interest in it and all of a sudden, Dan LeBlanc and the two or three musketeers got something to say about it. Because all that is, is Dan LeBlanc does not particularly care for me. So the rest of the taxpayers are going to miss out on that free service because of Dan LeBlanc. So our Highway Surveyor, which would, could probably, instead of wasting his time there, could be doing something else, which would further benefit the taxpayers of the town for, because he gets paid, because he's under his salary. So they said there's a landscaper that does it, but they didn't give you any company name.
Okay, but see, I wasn't here but listening to what they're saying and listening to what happened that night kind of makes sense to the fact that you can't, they're not going to say to the three people that are sitting in front of them, "I don't believe you have a landscaping company."
Why was, I had to send the letter saying they were going to come in front of the board and do that. Why didn't somebody call me back so I could answer some of those questions?
Did anybody know that they were coming in?
We didn't invite them in. They saw it on the agenda. We didn't invite them in.
So I think that we have to go back maybe and look at the facts as they stand to ensure that there is a company, whether they're taking care of the fertilization or whether they're taking care of, you know.
We pay a fertilizer guy because you've got to be licensed by the state of Massachusetts to put fertilizer.
But we can't, we can't call anybody out, right? They're coming in with a fact and we have to, we have to believe what they're saying. But we can certainly, because you're questioning that, we can certainly go back and look at whether there is a company taking care of it or not. I mean, that's all I can.
How is that going to proceed? This only took two months to get a response.
Yeah, it's, I know Larry, but it's summer and our schedules are a little different in the summer. We'll go back to our every other pretty soon, but it's summer and, you know, our meetings are.
That's fine. It still took two months.
Why don't we invite Larry, the Highway Surveyor, the three individuals that were here for the next meeting? It's all back.
It's been strung out.
End of story.
As long as everybody, everybody gets along. Okay.
That's what we should do. That way, everybody can see it, everybody can have it.
Well, you shouldn't have to come down here for that.
Listen, you want to come back or you don't want to come back. I mean, we'll set up the meeting and that way you cannot, we can iron out the whole thing. We can find out if it's true that they do have somebody working over that or not, you know?
We can find that out beforehand.
And you can ask them.
That's right. You can find that out beforehand. We should have the name of the company.
Right. I get it. And then, once we find out that they do have a company, if you want to sit down and talk to them and find out what's going on, then that's fine. I don't, we can put you on the agenda or we can go from there. I mean, I think that that's fair. We can't call anybody out unless we know what the facts are. And the facts are, as we understand them to be, that there is a company already in place and that they are uncomfortable with changing the company name stream. So, I mean, we can go back and find out if there is a company or not. Okay? I mean, I think that that's fair for everybody.
And if it comes to the point where these gentlemen lied, what is the consequence to that?
One step at a time. And then, and we'll talk, and we'll have Jack talk to Chuck in the meantime. Okay?
Okay, and when will we find out the name of this company?
I mean, I don't.
That works for three.
We can probably have.
That Chuck Macumber didn't know about.
We can probably have Jack work on that tomorrow.
Why don't you come back to the next meeting? We'll set up the meeting.
Well, when I work seven days a week and I have 11 employees, my hands are kind of full. I don't particularly like coming down here, wasting my time when I'm trying to give something to free, when I know there's no other landscape company working over there.
You come in and you make allegations that somebody was lying to the Board of Selectmen.
I didn't say that.
Yeah, you said, "There's no such company." They told us there was a company.
So we're just going to.
Well, then why was Chuck Macumber mowing it?
You have no idea what Chuck does every day. Chuck Macumber mows all the ball fields.
There was another company mowing it. Why would he have sent the letter to the Board of Selectmen asking for my help? That's a red flag right there.
I think he sent the letter to the Board of Selectmen because you asked him.
I asked him if he wanted the help. Because under a recommendation from, I think it was you, Mr. Stane, you told me to call him and ask for it.
About what? I told you. Wait a minute, no, no, let's step back. We never had any discussion about the veterans' park.
I made a phone call to you and you said you couldn't be bothered about grass.
The last time you had a discussion with me was about having the ability to mow the traffic circle. And I referred you to the state.
Yeah, and which we have a permit from the state.
That's correct.
But I called you at home and asked you about the mowing there.
Oh, yeah.
You did. You said you couldn't be bothered about grass.
I didn't say I couldn't be bothered. I said, "Listen, call the guy that mows it. He's not going to get involved."
Chuck Macumber, which I did. And he gave a letter stating that he would like the help. So why, I mean, we don't have to get everybody in. Why would the Highway Surveyor, who's in charge of all this, send a letter asking for my, accepting my help?
He recommended you.
Recommended my, why would he recommend me? Because somebody's already taking care of it.
Mary, can I say this? We've already got a path to resolution. The next meeting, you can come and discuss it with these guys. You suggested that the reason they didn't want you to cut it was because Mr. LeBlanc doesn't like you. Why don't we come and talk about it? What we're talking about is things that we could solve at the next meeting. You keep bringing that up over and over again.
Well, I had to come down here. I wouldn't even get to that point after I sent letters and just get up, you know.
I would really like to see you come in with the rest of the crew that was here that night and let's hash this out.
That's the only way we'll get to the very bottom of this.
You don't think that the Highway Surveyor?
No. I would invite the Highway Surveyor.
Absolutely.
You, the three people that were here, and the Board of Selectmen to sit down and hash this out. So we can all hear and find out if anybody was not telling the truth to us. Okay? That's the fairest way to do it. And then everybody will have knowledge of what's going on. That's what the open meeting is all about.
Well, it just seems to me that the town.
So are you willing to do it?
Come in again?
Yeah.
I'm pretty busy.
Well, give us a time and a date and we'll set up the meeting. At your convenience.
We have another meeting in two weeks from today.
Four o'clock at any time.
We have another meeting in two weeks from today, if you want to.
You know, in two weeks, there's so many things that happened that were, I have.
So what date do you want?
I want it two months ago, but whatever you want to give me.
Two weeks from today.
Two weeks?
Yeah. And you'll be first on the agenda.
At six o'clock, not four.
Six ten.
Well.
That way you can iron it all out. We'll all find out who's telling the truth.
Well, you know what? I offered the service. I had it thrown back in my face. That's how I feel. I sent the letter. I came here myself. You know, if that was so much the truth, then why wasn't it stated in the letter that?
Larry, do you want to come back and talk?
I really don't want to waste my time coming back and forth here, Mr. Stane.
Don't waste our time anymore.
Okay. So you can afford to throw out a couple thousand dollars worth of free service? I'm wasting your time.
Hey, you can include anything you want. I'm giving you the opportunity to come back here and live with everybody publicly and eyeing out the information that was given to us, whether it was right or wrong. You don't want to do it.
I want to see somebody else who's offered over $2,000 worth of free service.
That's not the point.
That's the point, Mr. Stane. Have a nice day.
You too.
Thank you. Anything else for public discussion? Okay, moving on. Discuss, decide agreement with the Police Association detail rate. Come on down. Here in the hot seat.
He's a smile, right?
I know, right. It's all we can do.
Yep. Always, everyone.
I'm great. How are you?
Good.
So you want to talk a little bit about this?
Sure. Actually, it's probably about, I think it was in April, Mr. Dunning from Independent Tower approached the chief via email in, actually, I don't know if it was through Matt Tetro, who's one of the managers there, in reference to increasing detail rate at the security detail job that we have at Independent Tower, which happens during the wedding season. The detail rate right now is $40 an hour. Mr. Dunning historically has been a little bit higher than our regular detail rate road jobs and such. And he does appreciate our services there. And he did ask in this email to be able to actually pay us a little bit more in the area, $5 more an hour. So it was actually nice to be unsolicited and someone asked us to pay us more money. Very, you know, being honest about that. And the guys that do work down there at Independent Tower on Arrow's Road take a lot of pride, you know, in mostly everything that we do, but there's a lot of pride down there, the guys that work down there. There's a lot of things to watch. The flowers probably being the most important thing. Because everyone likes the flowers, they like to pick them and put them on their breakfast table in the morning and stuff like that. But Mr. Dunning does realize that his booking schedule there in the summer or the peak of the wedding, wedding season can actually start on Wednesday night, Thursday night, Friday night, Saturday afternoon, Saturday night, Sunday afternoon, Sunday night. So he likes having the Freetown Police Department there. He likes the professionalism of the Freetown Police Department. We don't have many problems there because of the good presence that the officers have when they are there. So I think it's just his way of paying it forward to us or, you know, just showing us that he appreciates our services. There's been a couple instances where we've had medical calls there and he's enjoyed the fact of having the police there as first responders right off the bat. So again, it's, seems like a good deal for both sides.
I'll entertain a motion from the board to agree to increasing the rate from $40 to $45.
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Thanks for coming in.
Yes, most certainly. Are you going me to hang around a little bit or?
Can you just check my tires?
Let's have anybody else. I don't think we're the selectmen tonight.
Okay. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Next, we have Lisa.
I was just wondering, you guys keep asking questions in regards to anyone having anything else. Is it related to anything in particular? Or just that matter that was just spoke about?
No, for public discussion. We have a brief period of time in the beginning of a meeting for public discussion, so if you had something for public discussion, that was the time. Do you have any?
I, well, I own a piece of property, 35 High Street.
That's on the agenda.
That's on the agenda.
That's on the agenda. Okay, that's, there we go.
All right. So next, discuss letter from Animal Control Officer Lisa. Hello? Come on down.
Hi. Hi. Go ahead.
So as a citizen, I want to open a donation account. I have a lot of residents that ask me to donate money to help out with, within the control department. And I spoke with Janice about doing so and she stated that when I discuss it with all three of you, it would be for anything above and beyond what I'm not getting grants for. I have a grant that I just received last week for a spay neutered release program that I'm in the process of trying to get set up. I have received a grant for, that's for $1,000. I also received another grant from MVMA charities for $1,000 for NIH medical care for stray animals. So it would be medical care above, not what any of the grant programs would cover. It would be to help out, there's a couple of people in town that I tend to help with food, maybe some supplies if they need them, things like that.
You're a good agent.
I try to be.
Would this be like a revolving account?
Yeah, I was just going to go through that. I think when you talked to Janice, did she mention that it's going to be a revolving account? And I believe that, we'll have to double check, but, because we have several of those donation accounts, for instance, our town meeting, our annual town meeting book, that's a donation account and that had to be set up through town meeting approval.
Oh, she didn't say that to me. She told me I needed to.
Yeah, I mean, we don't mind, I, let me not speak for everybody, but I can't see a problem with putting it on the warrant if that's the way we have to do that for fall town meeting.
Right.
So that wouldn't be a problem, but because it's a revolving account and you'll be taking money out and people will be putting money in, it has to have a certain line item.
Yeah.
And it would have to be, you know, looked over by the town accountant. So that's a question for me.
That for me also, because I didn't know. I just approached her regarding how to set anything up like that. I was sort of talking.
She didn't mention how many.
She did not.
I have a, I have a.
I have no problem. If we have to put it on the warrant, then we can actually, we can make that motion after checking with town, I mean, with the town accountant, if we do need town meeting approval, I'll entertain a motion to put it on the list for the warrants.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I think the next one is yours.
Yes, the next one is yours too. Want to talk, right, want to go right into that? Go ahead.
It's the warrant for unlicensed dogs. That's every year.
There's a list, 147?
Yeah. Do you feel that the penalties are enough or, like, what is your feeling on that?
I do. I, by the time they, we get through all of this, it's around $80, $85 per dog.
Okay.
The list, I believe this year is actually lower because we've taken, then we go into the magistrate hearings. I go every Thursday once they set up the hearings, probably for about, I went January through March, to, you know, sit with the people, "Why didn't you do this? It would have cost you $10. Now it's costing you $80." So.
Well, the inexpensive $10 for a dog license.
It is. Right, for a spay neutered dog.
And it goes up to 80?
Well, there's a late fee attached, then there's an animal control fee attached, then there's another.
Let's refresh my memory. It's really up to the citizen to know when the dog licensing runs out. Nobody sends them a letter, nobody.
Oh, yes. We notify them five times.
Oh, okay.
To the point that I now will take this list, well, actually, it's already started, and I knock on doors. Hey, you know, warrants are going to go out, noncriminal citations are going to go out. Get down here, get this done.
Right, so you really go out.
And a lot of it's the same people every year. Every, it's the same exact.
So what happens if they say, "I'm not paying it for you"?
They have to go to court. They go to court. We just actually, arrested somebody on the dog warrant. So they, the judge will issue a warrant. It's a state law. They have to license for it.
Entertain a motion to sign the warrant.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Discussion? Go ahead.
It's not, we can discuss.
No, is there anything else? I didn't know, I didn't know if you had something else. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're going to sign the warrant, right?
Yep.
You don't need to.
Thanks. I think that's it for me.
That's it for you. You're out of the hot seat.
Thanks.
Thank you. Oh, it's a good thing you're here tonight.
Can you wait?
Oh, no. All right. Sir, discuss letter from resident requesting a temporary trailer at your home due to a fire. Is that for you?
Yeah.
Come on down. So we have a letter that states, "To whom it may concern, I, Alfonso Oliver, am requesting an occupancy permit to allow myself and my daughter to reside at my property in a sonnet for approximately one and a half years until I can rebuild on the existing garage and it's still there on the property. I have purchased a mobile home to keep on my property until the project is complete. Any questions, feel free to contact me." We do have a bylaw in town that you do have to come in front of the board in order to get a permit and for us to discuss that, so. Do you guys have anything to say?
Oh, I was just looking at the, these guys.
Yeah, go ahead.
Hi. James Agia, Ronnie was the interim health agent while you were looking for a permanent replacement. I don't know the logistics of this, but I am familiar with cases of the light. So if I can ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
Please, you had a fire, it sounds like?
Yes.
Okay. And have you been in contact with the building department?
I have.
Okay.
Yes, we have a new inspector and I spoke to him. He's come down to the property, property with myself.
Okay.
Reviewed the whole general area. And he suggested, you know, this point here, because I wasn't familiar with, you know.
Okay. How is, is the, is serviced by septic system, I presume?
I have a titled by septic system that was already on the home.
Okay. And water, you have, is something else supplied?
I have water. I have water. I have, the only thing I don't have at the moment is the electric. It was cut off. Please, you had a fire, it sounds like?
Yes.
Okay, and have you been in contact with the building department?
I have.
Okay.
Yes, we have a new inspector and I spoke to him. He's come down to the property, uh, property with myself.
Okay.
Reviewed the whole general area and he suggested, uh, you know, this point here, because I wasn't familiar with, you know...
Okay. How is, is the, is serviced by septic system, I presume?
I have a title five septic system that was already on the home.
Okay, and water, you have, is something else supplied?
I have water, I have water, I have, uh, the only thing I don't have at, at the moment is the electric. It was cut off because of the fire, but that's something I'll take care with the electric company. And, um, I'll just attach to the leaching field.
Okay, right, the only thing I can suggest to the board is, as part of his rebuild process for the house, he should have the septic system inspected. So if we can do that prior to the installation of the trailer, that will ensure that the septic system is working adequately. Um, and other than that, he's gonna need permits through the building department for the connection for the watering and the septic, so... Still, yeah, I can suggest.
Our bylaws state that we can only issue permits for twelve months.
That's right.
A year later, instead of a year and a half?
Yes, I suggested about a year originally, but if you go down, I've been working on a property, as a matter of fact, my hand is better today, but there's so many bees. And I go out and I purchase all kinds of chemicals, nothing works. The government has cut back on all that supplies and I, I wasted over a hundred dollars worth of ten dollar bottles, ten dollar bottles, it don't do nothing. And them little yellow jacket things, they're the worst. You get stunned by one or two of those, you wish, you know, burnt by a fire or something.
I'll make a suggestion.
What's that?
I find a beekeeper in Freetown, which there's many, I'm told, and they can get in there and capture the queen and move the hive in one day.
Well, because...
I find them, I don't know them, but I know...
And I, and I understand, what happens is, you don't even see nothing. And then all of a sudden, you're moving the goods and, phew, they're just everywhere. And it's only bees and bees, so it's kinda like, I was there today, yesterday, they attacked me. Today, they're just about everywhere, all over the place, so I'm trying to work in there and, you know, I don't like the feeling, so, and I swell right up. It's better today, but...
Bugs aren't bee friendly?
No. But, uh, you know, twelve months, I think is sufficient, you know?
If you had a problem in, in twelve months, you'd have to come in and, and ask us for, um, a waiver for the additional time?
For the addition.
Yeah.
And you can give a temporary permit for electricity. That's relatively easy to get, am I right or am I wrong?
Yeah, the building department will help you with all of your utility connections, so, uh, the only thing you would need to do prior is get a title five inspection done on the septic system.
I know the property's awesome. I live on a hill. I think I had ten years' usage on a brand-new system put in, so, you know, it's been beautiful there, so I haven't had any problems. Whatever suggested?
I'll make a motion to authorize a twelve-month permit. As long as that the homeowner provides by all the items in our bylaws under section eleven point seven, sub-paragraph A two, and it's all spelled out right there, all the permits that you have to have, and you have to go through the building department to help with that.
I, and I would, go ahead, wanna second that motion?
You second it.
Alright, I would also add to that, that, um, the board of health agent inspect that property in three months, okay? To ensure that everything is as it should be and that, um, we have the right to take back that permit in those...
Under the housing code, right?
At, yes, yes.
Yeah, I, I don't have any, yes, I don't have any... You can talk to the neighbors. Ever since the house has been burnt down, I had an issue with the insurance company. It, they took so long, they dragged it so long. By the time I got contractors in, they had all big heads, they wanted six hundred and fifty thousand to put my house back and the insurance company didn't wanna pay it. And I had insurance to cover it. I had to go get lawyers after paying the lawyers the fees that I did. They told me, "By the time we're done at this, don't fight, just take what they're gonna give you because you're gonna lose a third of that, so, and this could do three years, you're paying twenty-seven hundred dollar mortgage every month. Add that to the loss." So that everything went backwards and I purchased a home and I don't wanna be in the city. I wanna come back, I wanna, you know, just get this done.
We're just protecting the town, and we're protecting you as well, because we don't want you to have to suffer additionally.
Kind of question, a mobile home that you purchased has adequate heat?
Yes, it's a, it's a fully, I, I had a bigger one, but the town inspector said, "Listen, do me a favor. Don't come here with something too comfortable, 'cause most people, they forget what they're doing, it's too comfortable in there." Kinda feel that, you know...
Oh, you're gonna be there in the winter, so...
So I'm just gonna go for the, yes, it's a fully, uh...
No space, I don't want any electric heaters?
No, 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 it's got a heating system, it's a fully contained system.
I wanna clarify one thing. You're comfortable with the paragraph that's, and I, there's a paragraph in here, eleven, section point two. If you could take a copy of that bylaw and highlight that paragraph, it's only about ten lines. But I want you to make sure you know what it says, because a year from now, everybody know what, you know, right now, it sounds like a great deal, a year from now, things happen. And I don't want, I don't wanna be looking at you saying, "I didn't know that, I didn't know that."
As far as, which is...
It's what you're required to do and what we're required to do to protect the town and you. It's simply a paragraph, but I'd like you to make sure that he looks at it at some point, if you could, is that fair?
Yes, sure.
And you'll be, you'll be expect, inspecting that in three months anyway, just to make sure that everything's kept up? Okay.
We'll be part of the process of the connection of all utilities anyway, so we'll see the whole process.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, um, and for the discussion, hearing that, all those in favor, sitting by, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Good luck to you, sir.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
They're wonderful guys, they can walk you through this, man.
Very good.
Oh, you can leave that chair here.
Somebody else has to go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You too. Do you see any votes?
Hey.
No, no, it is when your time comes.
Discuss letter submitted by the treasurer and collector Diane Wallace regarding foreclosures on town property that are in tax title. Hello.
Hello.
How are ya?
Good. I put together a folder, I know I gave you a letter with a list, but there's more information here.
Oh, good.
And I'll explain.
Okay.
What it's all about. The, um, the top letter is the original one that I sent you with a list of parcels that are in tax title, which means there's already a lien on the property. The goal is to obviously collect the taxes, that would, that would be, that's the goal. But some of these have sat there, some of them go back to the nineteen seventies, a lot of them from two thousand and six, two thousand and seven. And the taxes that you see, the totals include fiscal two thousand and fifteen.
That's the penalties, everything?
Everything. But the tax immonish includes from the date of the taking, whenever the parcel was taken, up through and including fiscal fourteen. The only thing that's not on this list is the current year, which is fifteen, which is current taxes.
How does it get up to fifteen? Is it just...
Some of these things have been sitting there for a long, long time. So I wanted to bring fourteen forward and include it so that you could see the big picture of how much money was actually sitting out there. Part of the process, and part of the process would be to send a letter of intent to foreclose. Um, you can give them sixty days with the intent being that they would file for, you know, try to refinance these properties if they're so inclined to, you know, interested in keeping them. According to the new law, it was two years, now it's up to five years, which is sixty months. But during that sixty months, they have to enter into a payment agreement, adhere to that payment agreement, which includes tax, tax, uh, taxes and interest prorated out to five years, five years. And they also have to main current taxes at the same time. If they fail to adhere to the payment agreement, then you would go forward with foreclosure proceedings, which takes approximately eighteen months.
So this pretty much starts the process.
Starts the process. But I, what I also included on the back page is the list of foreclosures we already have.
Alex.
You have a list of foreclosures here, or something that we took a long time ago, that I wanted you to see what we had there.
This one?
Yes, those, those could be possible sales.
We're not, I'm confused, which ones are you talking about?
The last page.
The short one? Or the short?
The short list is, we own that, we own that.
We own it.
Okay? And then the other list that I put together that says potential tax takings, those are all people who are not in tax title but are outstanding on the tax side and includes eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen. These are potential takings, people who could have liens placed on their property for non-payment of taxes. I know, am I confusing?
No, you're not confusing me now, but, uh, certainly, uh, these should be, uh, for tax taking.
That's why I wanted, I included this list, but I wanted you to go over the list. I did send out, I've sent out at least two letters now on these with the intent to take, which means to put a lien on it, okay? Fourteen, we might wanna give them a little bit more time, but I've sent letters out with the intent to advertise, the intent to put a lien on the property. But I wanted you to see how it's, uh, it's accumulating and we need to address...
Thank you.
Thank you.
The, uh, the cases are already in tax title, some of those that go back to the seventies, the problem with those, a lot of them, can't find the, I think you go back on some of those and, uh, some of them were sent to, uh, the holdup. They just can't find the ads, that's the problem.
So you, so you can't foreclose if they can't find the ads?
Well, it's tough, it's tough.
Okay. Well, I, you know, this would be a beginning process. I haven't showed him this list, you know, the list, the intent to foreclose. I just brought it all up to date, like I said, this includes fiscal fourteen, but there are some parcels on here. One of them is almost a hundred thousand dollars. We haven't done, and there's owners unknown on here. I haven't added any owners unknown, 'cause we're in the process, we need to disclaim those because they weren't, they weren't put into tax title legally somehow. They need to be disclaimed. So that, that would get subtracted off of this list, but there are, if you look, I would like you to look at the names and if you wanna make suggestions to me, you can determine how you wanna proceed with those and how fast, how quickly you want me to proceed with tax takings.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just wanna point out that, um, on the list of tax possessions, uh, you'll find, uh, the Freetown Screw Site.
Yep.
Uh, that was in arrears a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars, but it wasn't the bargain that we thought we might be getting. It's turned out to be a hazardous waste site. So we wanted to check all of the, uh, tax titled properties to make sure, before they can become tax possessions, that we don't have another Freetown Screw Site, or some other problem.
You don't wanna...
Problem parcels may be there for a reason, uh, and we don't wanna just really, uh, foreclose on them. So, um, with the board's approval, I'll work with Diane to make sure that, uh, that those that are listed...
And the building inspector, right?
Yes, and the building inspector.
We talked about that. Having them look at them to see what would be feasible, but at least to go forward and send out letters of intent to see if we can clear up some of these accounts. It's unfortunate that some of these accounts are so old that it's gonna be difficult for these people to come up with the funds to pay this, so...
He's here on the potential tax takings. As the tax law, you've already put a lien on, right?
Well, there's a lien as a result of the tax bill.
Right, and, and at that point, these people, and the tax interest rates are fourteen percent.
Right, and the tax title is sixteen percent.
Sixty percent, absolutely.
No percent by the state.
But you also have an obligation to move those into tax taking. You have three and a half years, otherwise you will lose that automatic lien in the event that the property is conveyed before you take title to the property. So there's a timeline, not that we're there, but we don't, we're not doing any favors to the people by not pursuing it before it becomes insubmonable, some of them already are, plus the fact...
At sixty percent a year, it gets very difficult for people to pay off.
It is, it has.
It, it, and there's no provisions in state law to write off this interest. Except fifteen dollars, which is, doesn't help a lot of these people, so...
Madam Chair, there's law, I think, if, uh, would be, were to be a motion to send out letters of intent and to instruct the building and health departments to work with the town administrator to review all, uh, potential tax-taking, uh, properties on this list and ensure that they don't have...
For all years?
Yes.
Or you're gonna just do eleven, twelve, and thirteen right now?
The ones, the ones he's talking about are everybody that's already intact, intact, right? The others, the others, what I think I may do is put a lien on eleven, twelve, and thirteen and allow the ones who only have the fourteens outstanding to make payment plan arrangements, but they'll be strict so that we can bring them up to date.
Does anybody wanna make that motion?
I'll make it.
That's great.
Jack.
As recommended by the town administrator?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, we're all set, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Okay, town administrator?
Alright, um, I gave you a report, I also, uh, gave you a supplemental with what the meeting I'll discuss through. Uh, those I was quickly, the, uh, uh, under my report, first and foremost, and Chris October from Republic Services as well as, hi, Chris. Uh, we've been able to reconfigure the intersection to avoid both the movement of the telephone pole that we've been talking about and the need for a town meeting vote to approve, uh, taking of easement needed for the intersection improvements. As you'll recall, there were two lots that we're looking to get pieces of or access over in those easements, and one of them was particularly problematic. Fortunately, the one that's not problematic is ninety-four percent of the intersection improvements. So Kelly Engineering reconfigured the plan, you have a copy of that, it was part of my report. And if I find it, I brought another one along, and there it is. And you've all seen that. We're working on the language of the agreement that's gonna be required in order to get the, for the planning what to remove the conditions that would've prevented occupancy without the workall being done prior to the, uh, occupying the building. So, um, my recommendation to you would be that we, that the board vote to approve, conceptually, the agreement with Republic pending completion by town council. An agreement, uh, uh, between the parties so that we can present that to you at a future meeting. And hopefully, it'll get done before the next two weeks. Perhaps we could even have a special meeting if it's done quick enough. And, uh, so that's the good, that's very good news. I think everybody's anxious to, uh, see, uh, Republic make a commitment and start spending some money in the direction of addition to that building and, and bringing us some new tax base. So, do you have anything to offer?
Uh, just a couple of things, please. Thank you for having me here today. It occurred to me, uh, when I was here, President, perhaps some of you may not have known exactly what we're planning to do here. So I put together a small package of what a recycling center looks like and what we're attempting to do with the warehouse above, so... Is a, uh, a one-page flyer and a PowerPoint presentation that we gave previously on one side and some of our engineering plans. The other side has the agreement in its current draft form that we're working with the town administrator on. In the agreement is also a copy of the revised intersection design that we're working on. So you guys all have a copy of that.
Yeah, real good print facility, do you want me to borrow it?
When you get it. Um, just to read it, what Jack said, I mean, you know, we're, we're very close to doing a significant amount of, uh, investment on that, on that parcel. And, um, we're looking forward to, to, you know, concluding the local permitting on the process at a time limit. Our hope is to, um, do construction either at the end of this, this summer, this fall, but certainly try to put up at least, uh, a building addition, go through the package. certainly try to put up at least a building addition, go through the package, a sixteen thousand square foot building addition, try to get up before the winter break so that we can work on the equipment. So obviously, you know, hammering out this, this resolution, this agreement with the town so we can proceed with the intersection improvements, you know, like are very important to us, try to get them done. So we appreciate the board's help and I look forward to coming on. I wanted to come here and see if anybody had any questions on the project and obviously provide you guys some of that information. You'll see when you flip through that in the slides, what the guts look like and things like that, so you can see the building materials.
House representative, do you have anything to add?
No, I just would like to see this agreement finalized so that you guys can get a look.
Very close in terms of language and just have to push the attorneys to get through the board maneuvering.
Right. How did you leave it with the planning board?
The planning board voted to... Subjected to an agree, the selection enter into this agreement, which would provide for the road improvement.
Was the date by today?
No, no, no date.
No date?
No.
What you got, the agreement and the road commissioners take responsibility and make sure this gets done, that's it, they have the issue? That's how you understand it, right?
Yes, yes, just a agreement that we're trying to keep the agreement as simple as possible so that it's easy to review for everybody.
You would like a motion, if it's okay with Alan House, to approve the conceptual agreement? Is that what you suggested?
Yes. Approve, approve the agreement conceptually.
Yeah.
And the intersection improvements. And, and look forward, I guess, to the consummation of the agreement.
All right, so we're, we're just, we're voting on the conceptual plans.
Yeah.
Right, we're not voting on the agreement.
No, we haven't.
Right, but, I know, but I, I want to make sure that your motion is the conceptual plans. If you said agreement, I don't want that word in there. Because I'm not going to vote on a conceptual agreement and so we see what it is. But definitely the plan.
Based on the recommendation of the town administrator.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Geez, you're catching on. We'll hang it out.
Right.
Everything goes on Jack's shoulders.
That's right.
Sure.
And then we'll find a leader.
That's right. You blame me.
Blame Jack.
That's right.
Then I'll second that conceptual.
Plan.
Motion, is it conceptual motion, isn't it?
It's a real motion, so we're all set. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Now, Jack, what is this thing?
I'm sorry?
What is that?
You don't have to tell me.
I guess you said no.
No, the, we'll just, we'll notify the planning board that you've approved it conceptually and we're waiting for the attorneys to finalize the language and then that to be set.
Right, you'll need that here.
Yeah, not until you get the agreement, all right? I'll go back to Hallie.
And of course, as you go through the packets, if any of you have any questions, just you jump to, you and I, myself, it'll be interesting. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, nice to meet you.
Yep. Okay, next item is payment of mileage to the electrical inspectors. Mileage was included in the building department expense budget, three thousand for the fiscal year. Gas and plumbing inspector has also been budgeted to receive this benefit. However, the selectmen have not approved the payment of mileage. Mike Villarella pointed out that the town bylaws provide that mileage will be paid to town employees using their own vehicle at the federal rate of fifty-six and a half cents a mile. However, that, that could be considered to be included in the forty percent increase from twenty-five dollars to thirty-five dollars per inspection that was recently approved. And Mike Villarella is here to discuss this issue with you and you to consider authorizing mileage to be paid.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to explain what we've been working on. I've been working almost a year with Richard and he said, well, why don't you track the mileage for a year and see what it is? I mean, it was like, in the course of a month, running one of the three inspectors, and I'm not speaking just for myself, discussing with the other two, well, it was, you know, twenty-five, thirty, forty, fifty miles, but I've personally been averaging anywhere between one hundred and eighty-nine to two hundred and fifty miles. This month, it's already up to three hundred and nineteen miles. And there's a difference between the plumbing inspector and the building inspector, I mean, the electrical inspectors, the way they work, the, when they're ready for inspection for plumbing, the industrial plumber's called plumbing inspector, make arrangements for inspection. All the electrical inspectors, we all inspect on our own, we wait for an email from the office, and then we're under a time constraint legally of year seventy-two for twenty-four hours depending on the inspection we have to do. And what's been happening recently from the governor's office, the Office of Energy Management, is really pushing solar. And the solar people are doing these installations in one day. Last week, and I can give you the documentation, they did one on Keene Road and it required three trips, one in the morning and one for a rough inspection on the same day, and it's like twenty-one point three miles from the town hall each one of those trips. So, I mean, it's all documented and I, I took the liberty to print out a year of my own as far as mileage goes, and I was working with Mr. Brown and Mary. They said, look, you know, I can understand that it's, it's an expense, but looking at what's come in for just electrical inspections is almost twice the full building department budget, money-wise, has come in, the big solar projects are running and money coming in, so it's not coming out of taxpayer money. It's the permit fees, they entitled to a wrapped inspection and a timely inspection so they get the job done. And I tracked it and started, this is starting in January of twenty-fourteen. You're welcome to take a peek at these and what we do is track every, every inspection, the time, the mileage, and passing, and then we submit it on a, on a mileage sheet using that as a log. And some of those you'll see is zero. So if I try to compile all the inspections, like today I had six of them, all, all over the place from, studying from Dr. Bradley Road to Bradley Road to Chase Road, and I did six inspections, so that log would say zero, 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 and at the end of the sixth one, the total mileage was like twenty-one miles for all those inspections. But sometimes during the course of the day, I have to go three times to get the job done. And I, you know, even if the board says, look, I'm not going to give you anything fine, but it, it gets expensive and the increase on, on the surface looks like it's a log, but some of my inspections last more than an hour, and the solar farms could be two or three hours, and I get a flat rate of, it was twenty-five dollars for the inspection.
Maybe forty percent rate.
Yeah, but, well, forty percent is, is the same as the plumbing inspector, we just bring in equity. It's been that way for a long, long time. And as I said to Jack, I says, more people want higher electrician, but, you know, thirty-five dollars an hour, and they can stay there for four hours and still be thirty-five dollars. I mean, who they are, because I'm on them. You know, it's just, because some of the inspections run a long time, some are shorter, some might be a half hour, fifteen minutes, but the travel time to go twenty-two miles, even if my inspection's fifteen minutes, I can't go very fast and get a ticket up, you know, Chase Road or Mason Road. So I'm just looking for some equity and like I said, it was coming out of taxpayer money. It, it, the cost of the, the permit fee more than the cost of the inspection. And three hundred and fifteen miles, it cost quite a few, now we thought, and I think I discussed with one of the boards that maybe there's a town car available, but it makes it so inconvenient to load all my tools and the tester equipment, and I do do a bit of putting to test these things into a town vehicle if it's available, you know, when it's timed and straight, especially for open trenches, have to be done in twenty-four hours. So I'm just asking for some possibility to take a look at it and the only objection that the building inspector had in signing the mileage was trying to review it and see for its accuracy. And I said, I'm sorry, but the mileage sheet that anybody submits, some of the penalties of forgery, I'm citing that, saying this is my documented mileage. And shame on me, if I'm, I'm trying to pad the thing, it's ridiculous, it's very easy to check, but I wanted to make sure that all the inspectors were submitting it the same way. So, and that's why Mary budgeted more, she did say it was upset and went for the expense account and run a separate line out of her reimbursable mileage paid for by customer who took out the permit.
Anything from the board? Please?
My question would be this, I mean, you've been doing this a while, but...
About four years now.
I get that. You gotta get in your car and drive, I mean, to me, that's part of it. You gotta go from point A to point B to do an inspection. I kind of thought that was covered in that thirty-five bucks. And I understand what you're saying, but my position, I don't need to be a hard ass, but I think that's more than fair. A twenty-five, no, a thirty-five, yes, I think that's more than fair. And at some point, you have to say it. And I, I understand you, that permitting, you said it's coming from the customer, well, that goes into the town's jungle fund that way and, and then it becomes taxpayers' money. It's not like it's our money. And at some point, you just got to sit back and say, hey, you know what, we got to look out for the taxpayers. You got to tend to that, it went from twenty-five to thirty-five dollars this year, I'm just not going, I'm not going to embrace paying mileage. I'm not going to, that's just me, I'm just one guy.
We're getting twenty-five dollars for inspection. You also get mileage. So we just gave you forty percent.
Well, that's just to put us on the same levels of plumbing inspector.
Well, the plumbing inspector's just got it.
I think we signed his also thirty-five.
What, thirty-five?
Yeah. You want to give it thirty-five?
No, we just signed it thirty-five. Anyway, I, my feeling is that the thirty-five is a substantial increase, that's all I want to do.
Right now, there's no process or procedure in place to take care of things like this, right? Because you came in, you're like, this is how I do my...
Well, there is a procedure, I, I sign mileage for people in the water department all the time, as chairman of the water. And they, Kevin goes to school, whatever it is, that he's getting reimbursed for the mileage, the expense, nothing to do at the time, but for the mileage and expense. And because it gets kind of expensive, I mean, you know, it costs to ride three hundred bucks.
But you're, as, as a department head, that's what you're doing, right? That's, that's, so you're also talking about how all things should be equal, like the gas inspector, the wiring inspector, everybody should be equal, so everybody should be equal at this point. And if we're going to look at this as something we should look at after our budget season. And I keep telling everybody, and, and you know, it's a mantra of mine, is we don't go over, we do budgets in the middle of the year. You want to do your budget, you do it at budget season and that's just the way it is. So if you're, if, and I'm not saying I'm disagreeing with you or agreeing, I'm just saying like we're not going to revisit budgets in the middle of the year. So if, if that's something you want to push and that's up to you, then you need to, you know, go through the town administrator again with the building department as, you know, the person that looks after what you're doing.
Well, I spent a year doing that, Lisa, with Richard and Mary.
Not, not with the consent of this board. We have, I, you're bringing this in...
Most of the justification from the finance committee of increasing that for that purpose. And that's what, that was brought up with the finance committee, for mileage reimbursement for...
There was a proposal that was put in it and was put in the board. We're telling you that we're not, we don't, we're not going to embrace it.
We're not going to, we're not going to do this in the middle of the year like this. It's something you, it's something...
I mean, the mileage would be covered because the finance committee put it in. I'm just saying that, that...
That is a taxpayer's expense.
What is?
The mileage, because that's financed by the taxpayer.
No, it's financed by the front people who are front of it.
We're not going to, we're not, we're not going to have an argument...
So in other words, you're not adherent to the bylaws, it says I'm entitled to, to reimburse the mileage.
You're not entitled because you, you, the electrical inspectors, plumbing inspectors and so forth are paid a fee for an inspection.
Right.
That's what you're entitled for. Mike, if you don't want it, if you don't want it, you know, just say you don't want it.
Look, I'm, I'm just telling you that, that you're absolutely right, I mean, you don't have to grant it, it's, it's in the bylaw. I work for another town, Swansea, that pays forty dollars for inspection with mileage reimbursement. And this is what the standard, and Mary would, you know, said that, that that's what was going to happen and everything is on path. It's not, not by the finance committee approving that, there is no...
I think that bylaw is written for people that go to seminars and things like that and use their own car and go for a day and come back.
School.
We cover theirs, school, you know, whatever, we cover the cost of schooling and the mileage.
You, you signed for Kevin, that must certainly be for him using his own personal car.
Of course. I wouldn't let him take that vehicle out of town, you know, to go to school, come on. It's billionaire, anyway, thank you.
But I, but I also think it's something that you should hold on to and...
Can we revisit it?
Well, next.
During budget season, if you want to revisit...
I tell them inspectors to track it, I mean, it's a lot, three hundred miles a month, times ten, it's three thousand dollars a year.
It's just going to be a few months, we're going to be in the middle of budget season.
Well, annual, not, not...
But Swansea suggested the building inspector just divide up the amount evenly amongst the three inspectors and I can understand that would be a problem with it. But, you know, if I was an independent contractor, working for the town, you did the story, but I'm a town employee, and, and the only thing I question the board about is that...
Yeah, I know.
You might want to look at, there's, there's a problem because there are some class action lawsuits going on because there are people that are, are saying that the permit fees are in excess of the cost of services provided and that's unfair taxation and just, there's a question...
Obviously, they're going to go after Swansea first because you just told me they're paying forty bucks for it. So we're going to slide under the wire at this one.
Okay, no problem. That's just a court case that went down in Connecticut when the...
We're fully aware of the law, the law says that you can only charge a fee to recover the cost.
Right.
I can't say you didn't do your homework, you have some nice presentation.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night. You want us to keep these copies?
Yeah, that's okay.
Yeah, and I think we'll add that too.
Yep.
Okay, discuss circuit hours.
Yeah, the planning board is working on a couple of zoning related projects and asked for permission to utilize some of the selectmen's hours, you know, you get twenty or whatever it is. And I thought I included the memo from Laurie, but I don't see it in my old bag, it's probably one I knew as well. But you may be familiar with those projects that they're working on.
Okay. You guys all read that?
Yes.
So you want to make a motion as presented to improve those circuit hours?
Circuit.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Other matters that don't require action at this meeting are reported below for information only. IWT update, IWT officials were here this past week and left the attached proposal for the board to review and consider as a host community agreement. I asked you to review it and I told you that I'd do the same and discuss it with town council and DEP and we brought back to the board. Also, air gases plans are currently under review by Scott Marbado, the building inspector, he's met with Scott and he reports to me that special permit is not required, there's no site plan review called for. However, he will require a process to be followed whereby the applicant will be required to hire an NFPA consultant to consult with the fire chief, fire marshal's office to develop a safety plan to address any possible concerns.
Can I ask what that acronym means, NFPA?
National Fire Prevention Association.
Okay, thank you.
The consultant's recommendation will become part of the building plan. And finally, the purchase of solar credits, a project about to be built at twenty-seven Locust Street in Freetown by Borrego Solar could reduce our cost of power for all town buildings by conservatively seventeen percent and it won't cost the town one red cent to accomplish this. I've asked you to review the attached material and authorized me to continue to negotiate an agreement with Borrego. Incidentally, I've worked one of these agreements in Westport that saved over twenty percent on the, on the bill. It's solar credits, that reduce your bill. And since this one is in, the one we've worked in Westport, the two projects, one just down the street from me in Tava and the other right here at Freetown, I thought, since we've already worked through with Cobbleman and Page, one agreement, that we could benefit from all of that work that was done and the expense, legal expense incurred by doing one here in town for a project... by doing one here in town for a project that is also here in town. So I'd like permission to continue to work in that direction.
One question, Jack.
Yeah.
I remember last winter, Mr. Brown was working on an electrical agreement for the whole town with another-
Yeah, well, that's, that's, you have signed up with Constellation Energy-
Right.
For the power, but this will discount your bill beyond that, in other words, you can take your credits off of the solar agreement you have with Constellation.
All right, let's solve that.
Yeah, I thought it was a problem too, when I saw those long-term contracts through seventeen, twenty seventeen. But it turns out that you can benefit from both.
Okay.
All right?
All right, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Sorry.
Let me see, now, you got-
Good job, Mr. Hughes.
Thank you. I've got, um, one other thing, and I'm trying to-
Jack, can I just call IWT?
Yeah, IWT.
The IWT, that agreement that they had provided, that had attached. So I think our attorneys at all already looked at that, so this might be not the move for them.
Yeah, right. I'll talk to Mark and find out which attorney was working on that. But I gave you a supplemental, and I'll, I'll just touch on the fact that we're looking at an alternative to uniform allowance, and I'll check with labor council on that. All business items that are on your list, I wanted to bring you up to date on some of those. Status of the feasibility study, there's, I have a meeting with the principals of Architectural Consulting Group tomorrow at nine o'clock. If any of you are around who wanna join me, but as long as it's only one of you, that would be fine, all right?
Hey, you're not, you're not training anyone?
No.
I'm plenty challenging.
Freetown Elementary entry lease agreement, Fred Baker took the board's proposal to a regional school committee meeting, and they rejected the change proposed by the board, increasing from five thousand to ten thousand the capital expenses amount, because the regional school agreement says five thousand, so apparently the agreement rules unless you wanna change the agreement. The pond level, there's a meeting on September ninth at the, at the treatment facility, in Redditch Treatment Facility, am I? I believe, and I'll be attending that meeting, I don't know if any of you will be able to attend, but that's the kickoff to the fall season. A report on Mr. Bellmore, now, Mr. Bellmore will not allow the reservicing of his driveway to be done without a letter from the town accepting responsibility. My recommendation is that the town should not provide such a letter, and should not do any work on private property. Mr. Bellmore is an attorney, I understand.
Yes.
And, so he knows what recourse he might have, if he thinks the town has done him wrong. We had already received a, also received a letter about his well.
Yes.
And, in addition.
Yep.
School fuel usage is the other, last item on the list of items that were ongoing. And I'm still working on a report, I've got all the numbers, I just haven't compiled it yet. And a recommendation to charge the regional school district their share of the cost of operating the fuel zone.
This is the gasoline and so forth?
Yeah, the gasoline.
Will we have that for the next meeting?
Yes, you will.
Okay.
It's not that significant, but it's-
It'll help.
But, yeah.
Especially if something goes wrong with any of those-
That's right.
Nozzles or anything like that.
Right.
All right, and then, can we put that-
And by the way, I talked to Mr. Maderis, he has no problem with that coming his way.
Okay.
Okay?
All righty.
I think that's it, but if there's anything else, I'd be glad to address it.
You also, Ford?
Well, I, I still have an issue with Freetown Elementary School.
Well, I was gonna say, we need to put it back on the agenda for the next meeting.
Yeah, because we had the meeting the other day with Fred Baker. You know, he acknowledged that most capital improvement wording is about twenty-five thousand.
Yes, he did.
Not five thousand, and they rejected ten thousand?
Well, but the excuse was that it-
Yeah.
It says that in the regional school agreement, so maybe you need to amend the regional school agreement.
If we do that, can open it up for other things to happen, so we're gonna be really careful in what we're doing?
There's some other things that should be, be done in that.
All right?
Okay.
I think we want segment two.
Yes, uh, well, great, I'm flipping for this then.
You gotta go to the next one.
Yeah, vote to have highway survey, Charles Maycom, or design roadway materials services contracts that we previously awarded back in July. Do you have a motion to allow him to sign? Got a second?
I was, I was a little confused on this, you know?
The bids that we awarded, the bids, but now we have to give him the opportunity to sign.
Is that normal, is that what we normally do? I don't recall that.
We do, we do, first he opens the bids, then we review them, now he awards, he awards them, and then-
He wants them, is that what we're asking, we've done here, I was confused on that when I was reading it.
It has to get into a contract, so once the bids are awarded, you have to sign a legal contract, so he's the one that will sign a legal contract. Because I think we said before that we didn't want him to come in again, we already awarded the bid, so why would he have to come in again? And, you know what I mean, to sign it in front of us, so we're giving him-
I thought only, only selectmen can sign contracts for the town.
I think we changed that. We awarded the bid already, all he's doing is signing off on it, but if you want him to come in, it might hold it up.
Am I wrong?
I don't know, I mean, I don't know what your practice is good. Imagine, you wouldn't, I don't know.
I couldn't, I didn't understand what this, what this meant.
Most contracts outside my board.
Why the board of selectmen?
But I think because it was tying things up, we had already awarded the bid, so we already agreed to that, and we already signed off on that. So I think what we said was, you don't have to keep coming back, once we award the bid, we'll, we'll let him sign off on it. But that was something that was done, I think, a while ago.
I think we had an issue, Richard Brown signed something, and they wouldn't accept it, had to come back to the board to re-sign it.
It was the feasibility study.
That was a feasibility, yeah, was it?
Yeah, it's something, sixty grand or something, we gotta go to the state or something.
Yeah.
And then maybe next time, if you approve a project, you can give them that authorization at the same time.
I think we did, I think that's why, that's why this is on here like that. Because I thought it was, I believe the board thought it was redundant for him to keep coming back, since we already awarded the bid. Because he can't do anything over what we awarded the bid to be. But do you wanna authorize Jack to sit down with them and review everything? And then-
Well, I'm not comfortable, based on what I see here, so I'm gonna pass on this one.
Okay. I just don't wanna hold-
You guys wanna take a little-
I just don't wanna hold him up in ordering-
Well, he might have, he may have a contract that's ready to pay some fees-
Right.
On its schedule.
What, you should, why didn't he bring it in tonight? He could have signed it tonight.
I don't know. I don't know.
What do you think, Madam Chairman?
Well, like I said, we, I think this has already come up before, and I think that in the past, we have allowed him to review it and to sign it, because we already voted on the bid, we can't do anything above what we-
Don't stand behind my mo-
What's your motion?
That we allow Maccom to sign the contracts that we approved.
With Jack's review?
Jack's review.
Okay, all right, I have a motion, but you're not gonna sign, second it?
I'm gonna second it.
Okay, well, you could have seconded it, not voted, I will, I'm just saying, you put a second in and not voted for it, so I was just making sure. I will second that motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
I'll stay.
Okay. All right, next. Can I have this? I know, request from Celeste Mizadilakis to conduct a five-k road race through the section of town for the town of Freetown. It's been approved by all the other department heads, it's something that's a fundraiser for a young student that tragically died several years ago, so, well, we'll entertain a motion from the board to approve this.
If you raise that motion, I'll second it.
I wanna write on you.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have to sign a proclamation for constitution, meet September seventeenth through the twenty-third, twenty-fourteen, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, approve board of selectmen's minutes from March twenty-fourth, March thirty-first, and April second, twenty-fourteen.
I'm gonna explain, because I'm a trustee. So, we're gonna make a motion that we prove that it's, it's written.
As written.
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion, hearing none, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair?
Yes, darling?
Could I propose a recess? Because it's getting dark and cold out there.
No, you are not, no.
And a certain selectwoman is gonna take the plunge, is that what it's called?
I am, I'm gonna do the ALS challenge at the end of this meeting, but we have to get through this meeting.
It's gonna be pretty cold.
I promise, I order towels, we're good.
Do you have enough tape? All right.
Actually, if it snowed, it'd be more interesting.
Besides, I'm not gonna come back in here all soaking wet, and on camera for the rest of the night, it's not gonna happen.
And we've got an executive session too tonight.
I will do it before executive session.
Oh, my goodness.
Okay?
Let's all pray for a little snow.
Come on, come on, let's go, discuss info on fall special town meeting. I did get a phone call from Jackie that she wanted to talk to me for us, I did not have a chance to get back to her, can we put this on for the next agenda?
I had, I've already gotten dates from both of them.
Okay, you did, all right.
She just wanted to boys are coming about.
Okay, and?
Boost is available on the twentieth, twenty-seventh, third, and tenth, Jackie's available-
For what month?
October, and November. Jackie's available on the twentieth, twenty-seventh, and the tenth, her only concern was that there, she really can't, you know, for not to do so.
I'll make a motion to have it on November tenth.
Is that a, is that a holiday weekend?
Yeah.
Is?
Yeah, I think it's, is it Veterans Day?
What's the, what's the, Veterans Day?
Veterans Day.
Tuesday will be in.
October twenty-seventh, I think, would work well, and we'd still have Janice here, I talked to Janice, because Jackie expressed concern that maybe Janice wouldn't have time between the twenty-seventh and the end of the month to record whatever she has to record after the meeting. I talked to Janice, Janice said she would, you know, that she anticipates being here, being able to do that. Since we don't know what's, what's gonna be going on, town meeting at this point in time, I'd recommend the twenty-seventh, October.
I'll second that recommendation.
He doesn't make that motion, you're wrong. And everybody is available on the evening?
Yes, they are.
I'll reiterate what we've said before, that this is not a meeting to bring budgets up, or to talk about budgets, it's really mostly a meeting to, like, paperwork kinda stuff, bylaw changes, things like that, so emphasis on that. Anyway, I have a motion and a second.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Seven o'clock at the elementary school.
Ten twenty-seven.
All right.
Now, we'll put that on the calendar.
Sign petition from Verizon for a full location, to go back to their original locations that we already went through before. So we're going back to the original location, changed from the last time we were here. Do you have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I am gonna gladly-
I can't sign it.
Okay.
It's got your name on it twice.
Oh, my goodness.
That's not good, okay.
He's gonna only sign it once.
She got two votes and I got none.
Yeah, but he, how's he gonna sign it?
I can't sign it.
Proclamation, that's gonna be right.
Yeah.
Do you mind if he puts his name on it, please?
No, I don't care, but that's-
Then we're gonna change that.
All right.
Okay, I'm gonna gladly turn this over to the board of health right now. So, you guys are on.
You guys? I'm not board of health.
Okay, I have some things to discuss. But I'm gonna let Kevin come and discuss these things, we've got four variances that you're probably very much involved with and know more about than I do. So this is your beginning of your five minutes, paying ten minutes of pain.
I don't care.
So we actually have four septic variances you're looking for, right? So give us a little heads up on what these are all about, please, Kevin.
Actually, I was gonna defer to Jim, 'cause he worked on these.
Okay.
Good evening, Boyd, good evening, Freetown, yeah, it just would, it was easier for me to come here, I was part of the permit review process for these four projects, than to try to bring Kevin up to speed on all four, so if you don't mind, I'll speak on the variances.
Okay.
The first one we have, and I don't know if the engineer is in-house for thirty South Hillside Street, okay, you might wanna come up to that. We have-
Have a seat, bring you right up here.
We have a septic system that's located at thirty South Hillside Street that's going into failure. The design engineer has proposed to replace the existing onsite sewage disposal system with one that is Title V compliant with two exceptions, there are two variances that are required. Because of the tight site conditions there, and you can elaborate once I turn it over to you, the two setbacks, the two setback issues are from property line and from the wetlands delineation area. Both of those require a ten-foot and a fifty-foot setback requirement respectively. So the applicant is asking to reduce the ten-foot setback to the property line to six, and from a fifty-foot setback to the wetlands to thirty-three feet. The conservation commission has approved the plan as it is designed. With these two variances, the system would be Title V compliant. So I would ask the board to endorse the variances with the following restriction. I would ask the proposed residential building be restricted to a maximum of three bedrooms, and that further expansion of that property from a bedroom count and a flow perspective would be negated at that point. Good evening, Ed?
Good evening, for the record, Niall Zayer from Outback Engineering, pretty much what Mr. Aguirre says is all true, it has been approved by the conservation commission. The property, if, if the board isn't familiar with it, is located on South Hillside, right on the, right on the water. There is a wetland line resource area at the rear of the property that surrounds the entire property. So it's very, and it's a very small lot, so it's very limited an area, so we are, we have no way of meeting that fifty-foot setback that Title V requires for our septic system, that's why these variances are in place of Title V, to allow for an existing home to be approved this way. So what we have done is we've asked for that variance for thirty-three feet, from fifty feet to thirty-three feet, as well as, they kinda go both go hand in hand. The ten-foot setback to the property line, to the front property line, is required, is being as far in order to push, pull it away from the resource area as much as possible, that would, you know, in turn makes conservation happy, because it's further away from the, as a public health standard, it would, it would be further away from the resource area. So where allowing six feet would allow enough room to be able to install it, but it does not meet that criteria. So, but that doesn't, you know, in, in, at least from a health perspective, and then you can elaborate a little bit more if you'd like, but there's, there's no health hazard from, you know, to the front property line, pulling it closer to that, so that's why that's as far, just to try to, you know, maximize that setback to the, to the wetland as much as possible. Other than that, the existing system is filled, it's actually in the wa, it's a pit, which is deep in the water table, it's in the water, currently in the water table. What we're proposing is a pump system which meets the requirement of the separation that Title V requires. So we are doing everything in our power to minimize any impact that would be there, it's obviously a much better situation than what is currently, you know, existing. Thank you.
Hey, you're good with that, you're gonna endorse it?
I am, and have endorsed it, yes.
Through the board of health, have all the others been-
Through the Board of Health, have all the abutters been notified and has anybody else come to?
From my understanding, yes.
The green card, you have the green cards for the record?
Yes.
Okay. You just want to make sure.
Yes.
All right.
We did, as an engineering company, we did drop off all those cards to, to the Board.
Yeah, Inspector Benato verified that they were.
Okay, thank you.
What are the use restrictions?
Three bedroom maximum.
And is that what it is now?
That's what it is.
Is that documented somewhere in this?
It'll, it'll actually carry a D restriction on the property.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve 30 South Hillside.
I'll second that.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close? 30 Hillside's good.
Thank you very much.
Four here on Avenue, we have next. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Couple of chairs for these.
Four, you're on.
Thanks for coming in, folks.
Thank you.
Take it easy, Ralph.
I'll try. I haven't eaten yet.
Yeah, me neither.
Okay. Four here on Avenue, you would be?
My name is Brad Fitzgerald from SFG Engineering and a project engineer.
Thanks for coming, Brad.
Thanks for having me.
So, what's up with four?
Four here on Avenue. I think we've all heard the, the comment posted stamp lot. This is about a quarter of a posted stamp lot. It's, it's extremely small. And that property is currently serviced by a tight tank.
I don't know what a tight tank is, sir.
A tight tank is a system for a single component of a system that is put in place when you cannot cite a conventional septic system for onsite disposal. So, basically what it means is it contains the sewage onsite and it's removed by a sewage pumping company. They are allowed, they are allowed, there's no leaching field. They're specifically designed for situations like this where you can't do anything else.
I don't think it's a tank.
2,000 gallons.
Is it a seasonal facility?
I believe this is a seasonal.
Seasonal building?
Seasonal?
Yeah.
Seasonal.
It could be, it's insulated, so they could make it here on.
Are you the property owner?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
How often do you have to have a pump?
It's under contract, so it's pump routine now.
Once a month or twice?
It could be as much as once a week if, if need be, yeah.
It is fit within, set within a lime.
Right.
So, the contract is written as needed, which is basically, the lime says three fifth capacity. So, you're looking at about 1,200 gallons it would kick on.
It's a one-bedroom home, so technically if you use the, the calculated flow, it would take around 10 days to fill that tank. So, this would probably be pumped weekly if the building were used to its full capacity. And that's a contract mandated by the state that has to be set in place with the pumping contractor. And that will be indicated in the file within our department.
Who's responsible to have, for the contract?
The property owner.
The owner of the property?
Yes.
Does something else proposed or?
No. This, this has an existing tight tank and they're looking to replace what's there in exactly the same spot.
The same size?
Is it 2,000 there now or is it smaller? No, it's smaller, okay.
It's a thousand.
If I had to surmise, I would say that the tank is there, is undersized as was just indicated. It probably is questionable as to whether it's liquid tight. So, the new tight tank would be a monolithic tank which is a single core, no seam, no seams in it. So, it's going to be liquid tight. It's, it's going to be what, you know, state of the art by any standards. So, we're only going to improve what's out there now, actually probably 10-fold. So, I went out to the site, there's, he did his diligence, there's nothing you can do with this site.
Damaged by the, sorry, through the chair? Was it damaged by the floods?
Oh, it's very high, obviously.
It's, it, is it?
Way up.
You're one of the higher ones?
It's, it's at least, almost 30 feet above the pond.
Yeah, you're, so you're on that side?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You good?
I'm good.
You endorsed it, right, Jim?
I did, with two conditions.
Okay.
Please. Title V is fairly specific. There's quite elaborate section in Title V, 15.260. And it specifically states what the engineer has to conform to as far as tight tanks concerned, which takes into the pumping alarms, et cetera, et cetera. In addition to that, I would ask that the ceiling of all watertight connections required by that section, 310-15-260, be inspected before backfilling. So, that require, might require a couple of additional inspections, but that way the health agent, Kevin in this case, would have an actual eye on the, on the ceiling of the tank to make sure that it was done appropriately.
And I can verify.
It protects the homeowner.
Absolutely. Protects everyone, homeowner, any homeowner.
I'm good with it. You good with that, boss?
I am.
I'll make a motion to approve.
The second?
There are. Yeah, there are two variances in the language here, so I need to clarify that. And pardon me for not including those. The current situation out there requires two setback variances from the existing well on the property and the surface water supply which is long pond. So, those distances are 17 feet from the well and 85 feet from the pond. Now, again, if this were a leaching field that was discharging effluent, I would not be endorsing this, but we, there are no options here. So, we have a liquid tight septic system that if installed properly and maintained properly, won't cause any damage or harm to either of those two areas. Okay?
Was there a second condition?
The inspection of the ceiling of the watertight conditions required by 310 CMR 260.
That's the only condition.
And proposed tight tank installation must conform to 310 CMR 15-260 in its entirety. It's about this long.
Okay. Which, what is the numbers again?
310 CMR 15.260.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Four here on Avenue is good. Moving on to Five Go Lane.
If I may?
Please.
Five Go Lane is similar to the first item that was on the docket tonight, Hillside. We have a system that's, I'm sorry, let me, let me back up. Yes. The system is in failure. It needs to be replaced. It's another tight lot with water that borders it. So, we're asking for three variances for this one. We have a variance for a setback reduction from the septic tank to the existing buildings. Title V requires 20, we're asking for 10. I'm sorry. Excuse me. Yes.
It's leaching area.
That's leaching area, okay. I'm sorry. I'm confusing it with the next one which I believe is taken off the docket.
Yeah.
You're representing Five Go Lane?
Brad Fitzgerald, SFG Engineering, project engineer.
And they want to reduce the 10-foot required setback to 3.5 feet on the tank. The design engineer proposes to install a polytype barrier around the entire primitive proposed leaching area.
A polytype barrier?
Yes.
What is that?
Whenever you propose to put, to reduce the setback on a leaching area to, in this case, a solid wall. We put an impervious barrier around the set leaching field to negate any horizontal movement of the sewage.
Okay.
That way here, we, we reduce or almost eliminate any infiltration that might occur into, you know, the cellar or the basement.
How long is that impervious barrier? Says something you got to replace every three or four years?
It'll outlast us.
We, uh.
Well, I'm 70, that's not saying.
It's 40 mil thick.
I dug up septic systems, 30 years old and that barrier is still intact.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, it's, it's a pretty durable material, so. I, I think it would outlast the septic system, let's put it that way.
Okay. I'm learning here, I'm learning.
It's never the worries.
It's 40 mil thick, which is maybe, I mean, three times the thickness of a CD maybe?
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's a durable product, so.
And it actually prevents the hydraulic.
Sideways migration of the, of the effluent, that is correct.
That's a great way of putting it.
Additionally, there.
So, if the barrier doesn't work, the migration hits the fan, is what you're saying?
It goes down.
Additionally, because of the circulation rate on the site which was very well, which is usually typical when you have locations near a water supply or water, you're required to have increased the water table separation from four feet to five feet because the water moves so quickly through it. So, they're asking to reduce the overall separation from five feet to four feet. So, they're actually asking for the negation of the additional one foot that's dictated. Now, Title V does have a specific section in there that allows us to reduce that under repair conditions. And the reason for that is the engineer is trying to eliminate the proverbial mound that you would see in a, in a.
I get it, yeah.
So, so a four-foot reduction is something that's, that we're allowed to do.
Okay.
And, and it's my understanding that that's exactly what he's asking for.
For that reason, and also it eliminates the need for a pump system. So, it'll save the homeowner at least $3,000 by not having to put in a second tank with a pump in it. We can keep it a gravity run system. If they lose power, they can still use it, their facilities.
Kevin, are you good with all this?
Definitely is.
Okay.
Any conditions?
Uh, they're off. I asked that the septic tank scene, if they're planning on using a two-piece tank, be inspected by the health agent during the tank's installation. That way we ensure that that tank is going to be liquid tight. And I ask again that the proposed residential building be restricted to a maximum of three bedrooms, which is what's there currently.
Is that going to be on a D?
That'll be a D restriction, yes.
And just to add to that, when we do, these are, these two, well, three, you call them variances. Title V actually calls them local upgrades. And under the local upgrade approval, if you grant even one of them, you can't increase flow, which would mean number of bedrooms. So, it's almost automatic, but most towns put it into a D restriction and there's no issue with that.
Is that what, what they're all precluded on is the number of bedrooms in a house?
Title V sizes separate systems.
Yes. All too often when I see systems like this go in, repair systems, we're ultimately wavering what Title V requires because we're required to give you a system on your location. So, we, we do this, we go through the process, they get their three bedrooms, and then two years from now, they're knocking on the door, they want to add a fourth or a fifth bedroom to it, and now we're fighting. But if it's D restricted, we don't have to worry about it. It's done.
Done.
Jim, why don't they, why don't you use a solid tank, like you did on the fire one, instead of a seam tank?
If the Board wishes to make that part of it, a local upgrade, they can. I don't think you indicated that you want to use a solid.
I didn't, only because we have a water table of 3.55 there. The seam in the tank would be at an elevation of approximately six. So, I didn't think it was necessary, but if the Board wants it, by all means, I'll go for it.
It's certainly a valid point, especially since it's going to be close to the solid wall. So, I, I had given it some thought, but now in discussion, if the Board wants to, that's what we're here for. So, if you want to require us a solid tank.
Yeah, because you had said that he was going to go there to make sure they did it, they sealed it properly.
Right.
Why didn't go through that when you can get a tank that's, that's one piece?
That, then that's fine.
Might, might.
Make any difference to you?
Very well.
I'll make a motion to approve with the suggestion of the.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Five Go Lane is good. This is interesting stuff.
Is the next one still here?
The next one was really interesting.
16 bones.
I don't think we're going to hear it.
Yeah, they didn't make, they didn't make it.
Thank you.
Thank you. They didn't.
Unfortunately, they didn't notify the abutters. So, they had to be removed. But they're requesting to get the next scheduled meeting.
Okay.
I have that in writing.
How many more do you have in your office right now?
And most of them are requiring variances. Unfortunately.
Do you know when you can get to those?
I looked at, the three I looked at today didn't require a variance.
Some of them require variances?
Because if, and I'll go through the.
But they're all coming in now.
Board of Health chair. Because now we have two people in place and it's getting late and, you know what I mean? People are waiting for this. Maybe we should schedule a meeting in a week just to do those variances so we can kind of all get caught up.
Okay. So, I mean, we have to get all the planning to do this week.
I'm, no, no, I'm just making a suggestion or, I mean, if, if not a week, then.
They, they need to notify the abutters, so I think if we did two weeks, I think that would give everybody adequate time to notify the abutters and do the review.
Then I would, I would make a suggestion that maybe we start the meeting with Board of Health and we maybe start at 5:30 instead.
Be on vacation.
Because we're real crap, okay?
You just can't, listen, I have a vacation, you're the chair.
If I may, Board, why don't you let us assess how many we actually have that require variances? It's, I didn't realize that some of them didn't. Most of them haven't been coming in half, so.
There are, I know that there's at least two that don't and they're kind of getting held up sort of, so.
Okay, well, you have this one.
We just did a whole round of.
I'm just making a suggestion that maybe we, we can help on the other side. If we're holding you up, then I'd rather not do that either.
Sure.
Okay.
If they have a bunch of them, they just call you and you can set the meeting.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
Well, we know we have this one here.
Yeah, this one's going to be on.
Okay.
Which is a rather interesting one.
All right. And we don't, we don't need mine coming in earlier.
Sure.
Right?
Or extra.
Not at all.
Right. Or extra, right.
I think you guys have to mention. We need a shout later, let me know you make out, would you?
We'll be able to get a hold of you when you're going.
That's true, that's true. There's no.
All right, we're good? You guys are good?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay.
We'll report back to the Board and.
Yeah, we got a meeting going as soon as possible.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Appreciate your knowledge and your guidance.
Through.
Why do you keep saying that?
Because he's the chair and I don't want to step on his shoes.
I didn't say that before.
Yeah, but I don't care, you might go way back, okay?
Okay.
The trailer issue came up before, okay? There is a trailer. It's probably been there for like two plus years, okay? Really needs to be taken care of.
Is this 41?
No.
Which street?
Chippewa.
Chippewa.
I'm unaware of that one, so.
41 Chippewa?
Yep, due to a house fire, whatever, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, I was unaware of that.
We really need, still in the same situation, so.
Okay. We'll, we will, we'll look at it and we'll report here at the next ruling.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
20 years?
At least. I'm sorry, at least.
Just for the record, I'm sticking around for the bucket.
Just for the record.
I didn't, I didn't mine yesterday.
You did?
I was trying to be nice to have a recess before it gets too cold.
No, because then I have to come back in and I, there's only so long I want to be on camera, so from what, I just want to let you know.
I brought my way out of it.
Okay, well, you guys are all set. You're all set? You all set? Do you want to talk about the mosquitoes at all, or you're good?
Well, pretty much said whatever we needed to say to the reporters and ended up in the paper. I was comfortable with that, and I think, you know, people understand what our position is and what they need to do to protect themselves. So, I mean, that's, other than why put yourself in harm's way if you don't have to use protection?
That's right, and especially with the human keeps found yesterday. Okay. Personnel?
Okay, personnel, my turn now.
That's good, I'm going to...
Listen, make sure you say to the chair that...
I am going to say to the chair.
You know how hard it is to listen to you guys?
All right.
You did a great job, you really did.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay, ready to go? All right, first thing on the agenda, submitted by Police Chief Abbott. It looks like Police Chief Abbott signed it. Lydia E. St. Laurent, she's a full-time dispatcher at the Communication Center, and it's a month of service increase, going from 1547 to 1621. What do you do approve?
Second.
I'm sorry.
Through the chair.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the next one is Kyle Olson. This is a new hire, and this is a probationary call firefighter, submitted by the fire chief. And the rate of pay is $13 an hour.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next one, submitted by the town clerk. To appoint Diane Martin, 106 Bullock Road. We, the select persons of the town of Free Town by virtue of the authority vested in us by the laws of the Commonwealth, hereby appoint election workers effective for Diane Martin, August 16th through 2014 to August 15th, 2015. Make a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let's see, this is submitted by the town clerk, another election person, Karen Colling. How would you pronounce that?
Hoodley.
Hoodley?
Hoodley.
Hoodley. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. If all three go aye, I don't have to say who, anybody opposed, do I? Another one from Jackie Brown, the town clerk. This is for a registrar. Is this a test?
Those are just change statuses for all the registrars and all election...
For all the registrars, that's why it's seen no name on it. Okay, change of status form. This, this is a change in pay for all registrars from 8.75 to 9.75 an hour. I'll vote to all of them, we can vote once.
Okay.
The inspectors tell us, election workers, again, from 8.50 to 9.50 an hour. Election wardens, 9.75 to 10.75 an hour. Election clerks, 8.75 to 9.75 an hour.
You?
Do I have a motion by any chance?
Motion to approve.
All right, is there a second? Motion made in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, the water's getting cold.
That's money out.
She's going to hit me. Uh, let's see. This is for the Tax Incentive Finance Board. Tax Increment Finance Board, is this the TIF Board?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, that's what they call it, huh? That's what we call it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, appointing Diane Lawless, Jack Healy, Bradford Piver, Sheila Scududo, Deborah Crundly, Robert Raymond, and Lisa Pacheco.
Motion to approve so listed people as members of the TIF Board.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. These what, 25th?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with this because Jackson lets us communicate.
All right, let's see.
Is that it?
You took my agenda.
Yeah.
Is that it?
Yep.
I think we did it all.
We did it.
I relinquished the chairmanship to Lisa.
All right, we have some upcoming board selections meetings, Monday, September 8th, Monday, September 22nd, Monday, October 6th, and Monday, October 25th. So unless something comes before the board, those are our dates.
Special town meeting, I don't think it's...
And our fall town meeting, October 27th. Action for old business, is there anything you have to update us on, or are we all good?
Yeah, I, I think I did that.
Yep, I think you're pretty much, except for the debt owed by town employee, how old is that?
Yeah, well, I, as far as I know, he's up to date.
Okay.
Stats of feasibility study, not, not the, who's the thing we had to get to remember?
Oh, the legislation, special legislation.
It's already filed by...
Yeah, it has.
Yeah. Said that should be done very shortly.
Okay, perfect. All right, um...
We should do it before you get away, seriously.
Okay, all right, cool, okay. Are we going to be in there long?
You already did.
Are we going to be in there long?
No.
Okay.
This is two minutes.
Okay, make a motion to go into executive session and to return into open session.
Yes, I, I second that.
Okay, I will poll the members, Mr. Bonegatner?
Yes.
Mr. Sadek?